What really happened? But I think one thing that is outstanding, which is just an assumption, that maybe that the consultants were established, because that's one question. Maybe we just assume that it was established, that's why there is this end result, that they're dealing with it today. But I would say, maybe we really take it as it is. But we establish a process that is SCOPA, we get formal communication around the issue. Thanks, Chair.
Honorable Randall, you going to say something?
No, no, I want to agree.
Okay. Just before you come in, it means later on, honourable members, we have to discuss, because remember, we supposed to have a meeting with the Premier at the end of June, related to same issues, so we'll discuss it outside of this meeting. But for now, let's give the M E C and the team to respond. Because I think the concern of the committee is, okay, we agree, but there was this thing that you're going to appoint consultant around November. Want to know what happened, and thank you very much. Over to you, M E C.
Can I ask the accounting officer, Mr. Ndadani, to talk to the issue?
Sure, he'll introduce themselves then talk.
Thank you very much, Honourable Chairperson. Thanks, M E C. My name is Tulani Ndadani, I'm the head of department. Chair, following our report to the committee, we did indicate that after the Outer General made the certain findings, specifically to irregular expenditures. What basically has happened, we then appointed a number of service providers outside the department. The reason for that in particular was to ensure the independence of the process, because a number of officials were implicated in that regard. We appointed about nine companies. One were to do with different project of irregular expenditure and other irregularities. In relation to the irregular expenditure, there were about five areas that were implicated by the A G. One is around the month-to-month security issues. The second one was around month-to-month cleaning services that were not turned up since 2014. The other one was around the implementation of Primavera and Akipas. Thirdly, it was around the COVID-19 refurbishment hospital project. And lastly, the leases that were irregularly paid. The companies were appointed, Chair. They've concluded all the investigations, they've been accepted and approved by the accounting officer of D I D. The report has been referred after the recession has concluded, refers to labour relations for implementation of consequence management. Currently, our human resource management through labour relations is dealing with issues of consequence management in that regard. So we are already implementing the recommendations thereof. Thank you very much, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, M E C, you can move on to responding to the next question. Just hold on one second, Honourable Randall? Oh, your champion, okay, sure. No, thank you, okay. Go ahead, Honourable M E C.
Thank you very much. The, we have in the responses spoken to the issue of the war room indeed, and whilst the accounting officer will speak to that matter, I just want to bring to the attention of SCOPA that the issues around war room model comes from the State of the Province address. And you'll recall that the Honourable Premier did say that we must place our delivery processes on an emergency mode in the same way that we did with the COVID-19 interventions. And so the war room is now a province-wide model that has been, even in the last cabinet, EXCO, we adopted this model and various M E Cs have been appointed to lead various war rooms. Chair, I am, I've been appointed to lead the provincial war room on infrastructure. And I just want to assure the committee that there's an oversight work that has been done, oversight, I mean monitoring and evaluation that has been done from the Premier's office as part of the war room. And all departments are therefore expected to align to that. And this, we believe, is the best way to fast-track the delivery of infrastructures, Premier set in time, quality and cost. Now, with specific, with specific reference to the war room in D I D and its impact on the delivery process, time, quality and cost as three critical variables. I think the H O D will be, I'll ask him to expunge it on that. But I just wanted to embed the fact that this is part of the provincial approach and we do have one on infrastructure delivery to which D I D is part of. But let me ask the H O D to speak to how are they impacting their own delivery, the delivery process in the department? H O D?
Yeah, as long as the emphasis is clear. When you say what is the impact, it's, we are focusing on the financial year that ended on the 31st of March this year. Because if there's been some changes, given that intervention, has there been some improvements in that? But you can go ahead, H O D.
Thanks very much, Chair. Chair, the Outer General Improvement Plan and the establishment of the war room was started by D I D last year in the first quarter of the last financial year, after the H O D has joined the department as a way of improving certain inefficiencies. I must say, Chair, that the war room on A G in particular, because we've got other war rooms. We've got one on infrastructure that we are doing to deal with problematic projects and that one reported to the Office of the Premier. And then there's one that deals with issues of Outer General. And also, the last one is on the issues of cash flow management, which is led by the acting CFO to ensure that we comply with the thirty-day compliance. But the one on the Outer General, which meets on weekly basis, has assisted the department in a big way to improve its one, the annual financial statement, which will be able to submit to the A G this year. In fact, today is due today. I'm satisfied of the annual financial statement that we have gone through. We presented the annual financial statement to the audit committee. They gave us a green light, they were quite happy with the quality of our financial statement. And I must say, Chair, it was not an outsourced work, it was done internally by the CFO and the team. Also, we have presented the same to our provincial treasury. They've made certain comments, we have included those comments in the final document, including comments that we receive within our internal control. So we are satisfied, Chair, that the annual financial statement that you will be submitting today by the accounting officer should be almost error-free and it's part of the impact that has seen. But I also want to say that the audit committee was quite appreciative of the reduction of the findings we have done through the war room because we were able to remove, or rather achieve eighty-six percent of the areas that were picked up by the Outer General, including our own internal controls that were included in the A G Improvement Plan. And the outstanding ones of those areas are areas that, because of time, could not complete within a year. One of them is around I C T system, which is Primavera and Akipas, because it will take longer and also issues around the investigations that are currently undertaken by the S I U. Although they are issues that are completely outside the control of the department. However, they are part of the carryover to our A G Improvement Plan and War Room, which we are currently monitoring on weekly basis. But as well, one of the areas that was picked up by the A G last year was the quality of the portfolio of evidence through our annual performance report. I'm satisfied that the report that we should be submitting today with the annual financial statement and the portfolio of evidence and the work that A G is currently doing in the department, we are able to respond in time and there are no issues that A G is picking up. And also, I want to indicate, Chair, part of that improvement include the five areas that were picked up by the Outer General last year. We've given the audit committee the progress report and all the areas except one have been concluded and we've achieved all the issues that the A G picked up last year around the I C T system. And the area that A G was also worried last year was around the leadership of the department in consequence management, that there was no consequence management in department. And I think, Chair, I've already alluded that all the findings of last year, we have appointed service providers, all reports have been received and approved by the head of department and currently, consequence management is happening already in the department. And therefore, we are satisfied that this time around, the A G will give us a clean slate as well on the issues of consequence management because there is no matter that we have not investigated and that is not being followed through. Thanks very much. And lastly, Chair, maybe I could add, was around recruitment areas. Last year, we are sitting at about sixteen percent vacancy rate. I'm happy, Chair, that the last year, two hundred and eighty-two posts that were identified, we have filled all the two eighty-two posts from last year. And this year, we have prioritized two hundred posts. Those two hundred posts are, one, funded posts. Secondly, are posted during the course of this financial year, we might have retirement or some form of resignations. And those two hundred posts, we are already advertised, a number of them, and the remaining one, we want to advertise all of them by June. And that will give us a process of ensuring by end of March, this financial year, we should be sitting at far below ten percent vacancy rate as a department. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions from members? So would I be correct, then, M E C, sorry, to say that, given the response, the similar the plan that you've put up to deal with, to ensure that there's lots of improvement, particularly on the matters raised for the current financial year? So we expect that at the end of the financial year next year, there'll be lots of improvement. I mean, the plans that you have are still applicable, or are they going to be revised? Because we need those plans so that we can be sure that when we engage in future, we can hold you accountable based on the plans.
Can I ask?
Very much, Chair. Already in our submission to SCOPA, we did indicate the A G Improvement Plan and we indicate those four areas that are in red, all areas are green. And that is a matter that has been put through to the audit committee and the departmental risk committee. So we are satisfied that if we didn't have the certain matters of irregularities around COVID-19 infrastructure, which are still subject of the S I U currently, we should be moving towards a clean audit as a department. Thanks very much.
Okay, let's move to the next question. Honourable Randall, maybe I suggest that maybe let's ask one section part, then get the response. She's got about four questions to ask, so let's deal with the first one.
Right, so my question is under emphasis of matter. Well, the first one, significant uncertainty relating to litigation. M E C, please, can you provide an update on finalizing lawsuits? And then, secondly, indicate if the department has plans to reduce the occurrence situations resulting into lawsuits? If so, the plan must be submitted to the committee. Thank you.
Over to you, M E C.
Can I ask the accounting officer to talk to that issue? We have the head of legal services here, so H O D can direct. But I think we're ready to take that question on litigations.
Over to you, H O D.
Chair, my head of legal also assists if I've left a gap. Chair, we've done an analysis of where the problem lies in terms of where we are currently litigated as a department. There are in the main three areas of inefficiencies. One is the non-compliance with thirty-day payment as a department. You recall, Chair, that the Premier raised this issue in his State of the Province address, where D I D and Health, the two problematic departments in the province. There's been a number of consultation because our work as D I D is almost influenced by the other work and decision made by other accounting officer. The work has been on the issue of late payment. We have met with H O D, the new H O D of Department of Health and the CFOs of both departments. We have agreed on the process, one, to improve on the thirty-day payment. We have, I'm happy, Chair, that we have already signed the fifteen-day payment standard operation procedure between the two accounting officers as a way of improving the fifteen-day payment. Because while the policy talks about the the thirty days, but we are talking about the fifteen days to ensure that we are improving. But internally as well, we've done our own assurance as a department that we need to comply with the fifteen-day payment. We have subjected this discussion, Chair, to the Outer General as we are saying that you cannot subject D I D to the decisions that are outside D I D, but that fall outside of D I D. A G has agreed to that. We have given A G our own SOPs internally, which has been signed by all members sitting here as a commitment. All directors and chief directors have signed this fifteen-day commitment as a SOP, as standard operation procedure within the department. So we are heading as a department four hundred percent compliance this year. But where matters are outside of D I D, outside of audit, we've agreed that each respective accounting officer, in this regard, health, will take full responsibility for that, including the payment now will be done by Department of Health for all the infrastructure and maintenance-related matters. So that the accountability and responsibility sit in one place. The second area of deficiency was around the compensation of events, where we are taking a lot of time to deal with variation orders because some of these variation orders, Chair, were irregular. They were not procedurally done. Some of them were post facto, where officials were taking decisions on the ground without prior approval of management and that of the accounting officers. And that led to certain decisions where they have been made by the certain officials and when it comes to the H O D or the CFO, the H O D does not agree with the variation order or subject the matter to some form of investigation. And then we'll find that the work has been done by the service provider, but however, there hasn't been any prior approval. The last matter was around the finalization of the final accounts by the department, where there was, by admission of the department, poor management of service providers to conclude on matters of final accounts, especially where there are dispute between the contractor and the consultants that are overseeing the work. And there is a plan that we have put in place around that area, including development of standard operation procedure. And Chair, in our detailed report, we then indicated the breakdown in terms of that. Then the issue that has been raised is what do we do to prevent reoccurrence? And what is the plan? Chair, we have discussed the matter with our legal services and I have led that discussion, both legal services and also the CFO, because CFO is responsible for internal controls. And we are saying internally, we need to strengthen our internal control unit to do a proactive measures to ensure that these deficiencies through some mechanism which I've already alluded to, such as the payment war room led by the CFO, the introduction of SOPs of fifteen days led by the CFO and also issues of accountability and consequence management would able to assist us to ensure that we don't have reoccurrence, but rather we rechoose lawsuit. Unfortunately, some of these matters are already with us. It would be difficult therefore to remove them. But what we can then do is to prevent new cases coming aboard. Thanks very much.
Did you say the head of legal would want to say something?
Oh, she's free, Chair, to comment. She's the chief director.
Okay, sure, let me hear if she wants to add. You'll introduce yourself and then you go.
Thank you, Chair. I am Kunea Nofaga, the head of legal services. I just want to add that we are focused on reducing the case load that we currently have. In the last financial year, we've been able to finalize twenty-one matters. We currently have five partly heard matters. And we have, in this financial year, already completed three court cases. We also have three additional matters that have court dates. And we are awaiting outcomes in three other court matters. We then have also, you will see in terms of the report, an extra A, that we have several matters where we have indicated that we are waiting for court dates. Thank you.
Any follow-up questions? Just to be clear from my side, maybe just to clarify to M E C. We are aware as the committee that we can't say to the department you must eliminate or eradicate lawsuits, it's not possible. I think that's why I emphasis reduction. And so I thought I should just clarify that, and I think we're happy with the answer. Maybe we can go to the next question.
Yes, thank you, Chair. The second one is on the restatement of prior year amounts. M E C, can you please provide an overview of properties it anticipates are still going to be transferred for registration in the G P G? Provide us with the purpose or details of what it refers to as five-item twenty-eight certificate, in brackets. And lastly, provide clarity on how the five-item twenty-eight certificate, which have been confirmed and received and are all vested in the twenty-one-twenty-two financial year, will not result in restatement of an opening balance?
Over to you, M E C.
Thank you very much, Chair. Let me ask the H O D and the team to help us on the matter. Thanks.
Thanks, Chair. I would comment and then the chief director of property will add where I've left the gap. Chair, I just indicate that in the last A G audit, there were a number of properties that we could not conclude between ourselves and Department of Human Secrement. As you know, Chair, that there are different custodianships in the province. That of D I D on behalf of the province and Department of Roads on for the road infrastructure and human segment for human segment infrastructure related. So there are three in the main custodian in the province. So there were properties that when we were going through the vesting process, they were not yet finalized in that regard. However, Chair, I'm happy that we, before end of March, we were able to have a conversation between the two H O D of Human Secrement and D I D to ensure that the section forty-two properties are properly vested. And the issues of the internal controls that we picked up last year, issues that we are following up with our internal controls. And probably, I need to indicate, Chair, that we are also cleaning our asset register currently as the properties that are still sitting in our asset register, which should be transferred to the asset register of Department of Roads and/or Human Secrement. That is a process that is also currently underway. But we've agreed that while that process is being done, D I D will disclose this financial year on behalf of the province, while the process to transfer them properly. Because we don't want just to transfer in a very irresponsible way. We need to ensure that we give full account of the state of the properties, who's using these properties, what is the plan on these properties, and then we can do the other section forty-two transfers. But if I've left anything, I think Chief Director may add.
And she may add if there is, and don't forget to introduce yourself.
Good morning, Chair. My name is Kanyene. I am the chief director, property management at D I D. To add on what the H O D has already alluded to, firstly, I would highlight that as the question specified or does ask in terms of providing an overview on those that still need to be transferred and registered to the province. Whilst the province is currently working on transferring assets that does not belong to D I D to the various custodians, there are also assets that are currently sitting with various municipalities, which in terms of their use, as an example, they are used as schools, et cetera, that are meant to be vested to the province. There is a process underway where those assets are gonna be transferred from various, either they are sitting with national or they are sitting with the municipalities. And those are still, there is a process, it's already underway, they have been identified and they will be transferred to the province. And currently, they are regarded as future assets that should vest with the province. In terms of a clarification of section twenty-eight, it is a certificate, it is a certificate that gets issued once the asset is transferred and is vested with the province and is registered in the name of the province. And that certificate is the legal proof that that particular asset belongs to the province. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any follow-up questions? Maybe in your own assessment, now that you've concluded the twenty-twenty-one-twenty-two audit and the H O D has indicated that you are submitting today, how does it look like? What is your impression? Do you think that this might not be an issue with the A G? Have you resolved that? And you still think it could be an issue, but it sounds like it's work in progress?
If you can answer, yeah, you can proceed. Thanks, Chair. My name is Moloko Matloha. With regards to the-
Just put the mic closer. Yeah, sure, thank you.
Thanks, Chair. My name is Moloko Matloha. With regards to the progress that we've made on the immovable asset, I can safely say that there is some serious intervention that was done by the department. One, it was to deal with the issues of the section forty-two with regards to those assets that were supposed to have been transferred from the women's settlement. We have deliberated on those assets. And then both the department have therefore concluded to say that we will not be receiving those assets for this year. And then with regards to the, what do you call it, the disposals part of it, there were five properties that were sold during the year. We have definitely accounted for those five properties. And then we have also looked into the issues of the portfolio of evidence. And then on the issue of the items twenty-eight certificate, there's, I think, there's five properties that we have identified from our side. We've also looked into the portfolio of evidence that was submitted to us. And then we are quite happy to say that, based on the review process that we have done as a department, there will not be any material misstatement or any restatement of the prior figures. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next question, Honourable Randall?
Thank you, Chair. Subsequent event, the fire damage at the Charlotte Makike Hospital by the thirty-first of January this year. M E C, can you please provide a full update on the progress made in repairs of damages by the fire at the hospital, at the mentioned hospital?
We really appreciate, we really appreciate that because we also had an engagement with the Department of Health. When they left, there were still lots of questions, so we're hoping that you'll be able to assist us. Thank you, over to you.
Yeah, let me ask the H O D to start, I'll come back on this matter, H O D.
Chair, you, Honourable Chairmembers, you recorded the Premier pronouns in February. They said that Todd Matloha will be handed over to Department of Health. We have already handed over the Todd Matloha as a project in terms of the work that still needs to be done.
You mean, let's just be clear, handed over the whole hospital? You mean only the repairs?
No, no, the whole hospital. One, we are no longer the custodian. There has been a Premier's proclamation- There has been a premier's proclamation to that effect, which is a legal process that is required. We have received the two proclamation, one for Capex project, the second one on the maintenance and thirdly, the custodianship in that regard. We are now in the process of doing a full audit between the CFO and Head of Property of all the assets that we need to formally hand over to Department of Health so that there's a proper process. However, the, in terms of infrastructure delivery for both Capex and maintenance, we are no longer involved with Capex. There was one project that you did last year as part of following the fire, that was the radiation oncology that was completed and handed over to Health in July twenty twenty one. All the remaining works that must be done in terms of different phases, that will no longer be done by D I D. We leave to Department of Health to undertake that work. But all I know is that Department of Health would have an arrangement with National Health and D B S A to do that work, but that will not necessarily involve D I D. So Chair, there are three or four outstanding maintenance project, which we carry over from the last financial year. We have agreed that Department of Infrastructure ourselves will complete the outstanding maintenance work while our maintenance team is on site. We have also met first led by the acting M E C Mamabulo as two Departments of Health and D I D on the roadmap to hand over the third Malaga. The two H O Ds have met and have agreed. There's currently a task team in place that is led by the two divisions of infrastructure on the roadmap towards handing over, recall Chair, when you hand over, you can't just cut. There are issues of staff which involved unions and organized labor. We need to ensure that that process, HR process is undertaken correctly. Secondly, we need to ensure that the outstanding work on maintenance in particular is fully completed and handed over. However, the work that was done following the fire, the closeout report was done and given to the H O D of Health for its implementation. So at this point, we are no longer involved except in the process of heading over in terms of that work. Thanks very much.
Thank you, M E C, you said you might come back, is it fine?
I think to save you time Chair, let's leave it there. But yeah, I think, I thought H O D will also speak to the fact that we visited the hospital with the minister to check some aspects, parts of it that are already working. But I think let's leave it there Chair.
Okay, thank you, any follow up questions? None, the last, okay, follow up question?
Just for clarity, H O D, in terms of the National Department of Health and E B S I being involved here, how comfortable are you that the Provincial Department of Health will be able to deal with this? And to repair this hospital, you're honest with you, please? Because we need to think of our people out there, our residents.
I think it's a question that must ask the M E C, yes, M E C?
Yeah, I thought all questions from the House are to the M E C, but but I think this specific one is being branded as to the M E C. I think Chair, it will certainly be speculation to talk about how the Department of Health in the province will be able to handle the issues or not. I think we will be getting into a different space if we're to do that. What is important is, in the meeting that the H O D or process that the H O D referred to, what I had to make sure happens is that the accounting officers of D I T and Health have a smooth handover process. And we have stipulated what that means. And one of the things that we've been very clear about is that there must not be any termination of any of the current services that are done by D I T if both sides are not comfortable that this requisite capacity to take over the function. And I think the comfort I'd like to give the committees that in the processes that have happened, National Department of Health has essentially taken over the role that D I T was playing to support the hospital. And to that extent, we should be comfortable that the National Department of Health itself is currently overseeing everything that D I T could have done. And I've made it very clear also to the National Department that we shouldn't have any premature termination or withdrawal of a service when the takeover process is not yet sufficiently clinical and matured to give that comfort. The last point I want to make Chair is that we all are concerned about that issue. And that's why when I came in, one of the issues Chair that I had to make sure happened properly was that handover because there was a bit of a panic particularly on the Charlotte Makike management about the transition. So, so I can assure members that the transition should be seamless unless the two accounting officers drop the ball, I don't think they will, I don't think they should. We have placed it firmly in their hands to administer that process. In the letters that we gave them, we also said they will be held accountable for anything and they can't delegate that transition to junior officials. So as part of the security of the process, we had to make sure that it's a non-delegatable fund, you can't delegate it to a D D G. So the two accounting officers are the first and last level of responsibility on anything relating to that hospital. So there can't be anything that goes wrong because we have even written them letters, appointing them to manage the transition precisely because we are aware that in this type of environment, there could be premature termination or neglect, still saying D I D is still here, is not there. So, but currently Chair, the date of effect of the promulgation essentially is terminated. D I D as the custodian. So it means that Health is fully responsible for the hospital. What D I D is managing there is a transition because we have clearly said also you can't have two levels of accountability in one institution. So the accountability that we have put on the two H O Ds is the transition but the final accountability is with Health. Because the proclamation has effectively meant D I D must disengage, but that's not an abrupt process. So I just wanted to comfort you that we have put all measures in place to manage that process better.
Thank you very much, yeah, okay.
Thank you so much.
Last set of questions?
Yeah, thank you M E C, you answered me and I'm comfortable, thank you. That's exactly what I wanted to hear about the transition, I think it's important. My last one is on Covid nineteen expenditure where the department had Covid nineteen projects which were done through the emergency procurement guide. And I'm sure you received the, I'm not gonna go through the content of the table. M E C, please provide further details on progress made for the period to the end of the twenty twenty one, twenty two financial year in each of the Covid nineteen projects which were done through emergency procurement guide. And lastly, please provide plans and timeframes to complete the specific project. Thank you so much.
Maybe M E C, in your response, it could be that because of the detail, you might say you'll submit it later. But if you think you can just, of course, I mean, the committee wants for each. So maybe you can submit it, but if you want to comment on what, somewhere they think is possible, that is possible, you can do so.
Yeah, so, so Chair, I think the, the H O D will speak to the matter, but there are two levels of this issue. One is project by project, which we can provide the detail. But let me give the accounting officer the opportunity to give a high level picture, of course, can use some of the examples to clarify the point. I might come back on the matter Chair.
Thank you, H O D.
Thanks Chair, Chair, I'm very much familiar with the progress on the refurbishment of Covid nineteen. There are total of eight project that were part of the Covid nineteen refurbishment. One is Jubilee Hospital, we have completed that project, there are no issues. The second one is George Mukari Hospital was completed in December twenty twenty. Then this Chrisani Paragonat Hospital, it is completed. The outstanding one is Kopanong Hospital. Chair, the main issue is that we terminated the first contractor and then we appointed a second contractor. However, the, the, the work was badly done by the first contractor. And also while the contractor was not on site, a lot of vandalism had happened. And we've agreed with the both H O Ds of Health and D I D that it will be unnecessary to complete the work of in line with Covid nineteen. In the light of declining situation, we rather Department of Health repurpose the hospital. So there is internal consultation within Health to repurpose the hospital. I have received confirmation that by end of May, which is today, the internal process within the clinicians at Health, they'll be able to come back to us and give us a revised scope, which will be a repurposing of the hospital. And then we'll complete the hospital in line with the repurposing mandate. At this point then, the hospital may not proceed because it might be a wasteful expenditure to continue spending in line of the irrelevant mandate or irrelevant papers. The fifth one is Twane District Hospital, it was completed. Lenazia C H C Clinic was also completed. The one that we have just completed is Dr. George Mukari. We have completed the hospital hundred percent. We are now in consultation with the city of Twane to assist with the certificates of occupation. And as soon as we receive that, they will hand over the hospital and then would be done. So the only remaining hospital at this point, Chair, out of the eight, is Kopanong Hospital. And we are waiting for that direction on the repurposing. Otherwise, we are almost done.
Thanks Chair. M E C, I'm sorry, there was a use of acronym A P T, what does that stand for?
A P T, it's standing for Alternative Building Technology. These are the hospitals that during Covid nineteen were done as a first track program by the department. And I must indicate that some of the, this work is a work that the S I U through the proclamation by the President is currently investigating. They've asked the President for an extension up until end of April. We are hoping that between May or June, we should be getting the final report from the S I U on the work that was done because it is a public information. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much, Honorable Kekane. Maybe you should also ask the first question, then we'll just take them bit by bit.
No, I would request that I asked, they're not long.
Okay, no, then you can do that, no, it's fine, you can do that.
Okay, no, thank you very much and good morning to you Chairperson, honorable members, M E C.
Maybe bring your mic closer, I can't hear you.
Greetings to yourself, Chairperson, honorable members, the M E C and the team and all the members present here today. My question will focus on the expenditure management, M E C. And I think on my first question, it relates to the thirty day payment issue. And I know you would have touched on it a little bit, H O D, in your response to the first question. But I would just want to emphasize and just request the M E C to provide an overview assessment of the trends in paying the service providers within the fifteen days and thirty days in the financial year ended March twenty twenty two, including an analysis of the challenges and its proposed interventions. And I know last week when we met with the Department of Health, they actually outlined the challenges. So we would want to hear from Infrastructure D I D if they are facing the similar challenges in this regard. And secondly, to provide a plan or measures it will take to demonstrate its intentions to meet the targets of paying these service providers within the fifteen and thirty day period. And those plans would be expected by the committee. And then on irregular expenditure, we would request the M E C to provide an explanation for the consultant who was appointed in the first week of December twenty twenty one to investigate irregular expenditure within sixty days. And just to check as to why he had not finalized the investigations within the prescribed period. Also provide us with the assessment of the effectiveness of the corrective measures which were reported to the committee in November of twenty twenty one as to which ones have been put in place to deal with these occurrences. And lastly, on this question, to request the department to provide the committee with a plan or measures they have put in place to prevent the occurrence of irregular expenditure in the twenty two twenty three financial year.
Honorable Kekane, may I, with indulgence, I think that we lose track.
No, I'm done, Chair. Okay, I'll stop there and then I'll ask the last one separately.
Yeah, because the first one relates to thirty day payment. If you can just be clear on that one, before you move to irregular expenditure.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair and Honorable Kekane. Let me ask the team led by H O D to help us with the three questions that have been asked already.
Thank you very much Chair. Chair, I must say that as a department on the compliance, at the end of the financial year ended thirty one March twenty twenty two, we have achieved ninety four percent in terms of compliance, as a vote fifteen in terms of our own vote, where we have got controls as a department. And that's why I was saying from ninety four, I'm comfortable that you are heading for hundred percent compliance. The challenge has been on the non-achievement where Department of Health is involved, where we only achieve about, I think seventy percent with the whole financial year as a department. So that's where we are not doing well. Hence from first of April, we committed that let's separate areas of responsibility and accountability, let department take fuller process on issue of payment. And we'll take issues of responsibility within our own control. But the measures that we have put in place, as I've said earlier on, it's around the issues of doing away with the manual system of invoicing. One, where all payments would now be done in electronic system. Secondly, all service providers, before they capture the information, the project managers internally, where they are involved, you'll have to do what we call a checklist template verification, whether one, you comply with SARS, they tick. Two, are you registered in central supplier database? So that tick check would assist the department that at a time of you submitting an invoice and the invoice being captured, it's a correct invoice as a process. And that process is led by the CFO. But also we have said where we have got current service providers on a month to month basis like our landlords, we have also workshop them on how to capture the information correctly and so forth. We are hopeful Chair, therefore that part of the things that we have already put in place as a department, we should be heading for a hundred percent compliance going forward. The issues around the investigation on thirty days last year, Chair, the investigation was concluded, consequence management for the officials that were implicated in the delays has happened already. Those officials were identified and they were penalized accordingly. The issue around the effective measures that are put in place, one of the areas that were picked up by the investigation was around the adequacy of our procurement policy, particularly around emergency policy. the adequacy of our procurement policy, particularly around emergency policy. This one is a policy that we are currently reviewing. Our head of procurement is in the process of reviewing the policy because we have agreed with the service provider that we need a dedicated chapter just on emergency policy as a department, so that the step-by-step process, we don't end up with another irregular expenditure based on non-compliance on issues of urgent and emergency policies. The other one is around the C E S that were picked up as one area that was not adequately addressed in our policy and were included as part of our review. And lastly, we are studying the work of the property audit that before any matter is considered by the P E C and the H O D, the property report must be taken into full consideration by both P E C and the accounting officer. So we are hopeful that through those measures, we should be able to have one, a proper policy, two, a proper process towards a clean audit reduction on irregular expenditure. But Chair, I must be honest to say that they are carryover irregular expenditure when one, we have not received condemnation from Treasury. Because Treasury said they are not comforting to give us condemnation on certain areas until the S I U has concluded those investigations. And that's one area that we can conclude, so until that process is concluded. Because Treasury is saying that even if you have investigated, which is correct, I agree with Treasury, even if we have done the investigation, they also want put full of evidence on consequence management before they can give approval for condemnation. And until then, we have received the report from S I U and we started the consequence management, they can't give us those condemnation. So we'll stay with those numbers until that process is concluded. Thanks very much.
Just as a follow-up, I just want to be clear if I understand correctly. When it comes to the problems you have, you keep on referring to Department of Health. If I understand correctly, D I D doesn't only help or service Department of Health, there are other departments, Education, you name them. Does that mean the problem is only there? Okay, okay, no, thanks.
For Chair, yes, other departments don't have problems in terms of payment issues. Yeah.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions, Honorable Randal?
Yes, Chair, just for the benefit of the meeting, M E C, last week we received the G P G White Report. And unfortunately, H O D, this department is still struggling with thirty days. You had a number of seven hundred and eighty-eight invoices outstanding to the amount of three hundred and thirty-five million at the end of March, of which hundred and seventy invoices to the value of sixty point eight million were not paid, you know, out of thirty days. So Chair, if it is Health, I mean, and we have, we had interrogated both the departments already, but this is continuing. Some way, somehow, we need to address this, otherwise all your efforts, M E C, with all due respect from your side, will be in vain because you do not have Health coming to the party to help to improve your situation here. Thank you, Chair.
M E C, want to respond to that or comment?
May I ask H O D?
Chair, I think that report from Treasury is a correct one. Because there has been bilaterals led by Office of the Premier and we have indicated our challenge. The opening balance end of March was about seventy-six million rand from Department of Health. And currently, they are owing us about thirteen sixteen million rand. They've made a commitment, the CFO of Health has made commitment in the meeting of last week, two weeks back, sorry, I was there. And she made a commitment that she's gonna pay incentives until mid-June to deal with the entire backlog and arrive at what we call it stabilized current status. Unfortunately, Chair, I must say at this point, we have not seen that commitment being realized. But at this point, as I'm sitting, it's thirteen sixteen million rand that is current that she needs to pay because she committed to pay about fifty million rand weekly to ensure that by mid-June, she stays clean. That's a commitment she made.
No, thank you very much. Okay, M E C, you want to say something before?
No, Chair, I just want to to say that allow us to go work on this issue because the facts before the meeting and what has been said need to come together. And I think I'll plead with the committee that allow myself, the M E C of Health and M E C of Finance to deal with this issue. Because if Health make commitments that are not being honored, we need to find out what are the reasons. And in my experience, the reason flows between D I D and Health. So we shouldn't depend on the CFO of Health making commitments. We should be sure that those commitments will be met because in some of the instances, Health may not have the money. And we need to go back to that, Health might have issues with some of these invoices. So I think we need to go invoice by invoice to understand this commitment that has been made. Otherwise, we come back in the next meeting and we're still sitting with the same situation. So I'll say this one, we minute it as work in progress. It needs to be clarified.
Thank you, Honorable Kanyani.
Yes, no, thanks, Chair, and I appreciate the response by the M E C because, like I've mentioned earlier, that when we interrogated Health last week, they indicated their challenges to us, but I'm not sure if they are sharing their challenges with yourselves. So perhaps that platform that you want to create will assist for them to clarify their challenges in terms of payment, especially on the fifteen days. Thanks. As I proceed, Chairperson, H O D, I know you have spoken to the submission of the department's improvement plans in the previous response to the first question by Honorable Kanyani. And you'll realize, M E C, that we are putting emphasis on the submission of plans in each set of questions. Because as a committee, we want to be assured that there is appetite by the department to resolve all these matters. And coming to my last question, which relates to fruitless and wasteful expenditure, we would like the M E C to provide clarity on the correlation in the investigation by the task team and the investigation by the consultants of its fruitless and wasteful expenditure incurred on the heat ventilation and air con equipment project. And lastly, to provide an update on the matter which was referred to the state attorney relating to the seventeen point three million irregular expenditure which was uncovered through a report. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, just to say that after I've responded, you are going to move to the last question that will be asked by Honorable Kanyani. And then after you've responded, we will just give a I don't know if Treasury would want to say something overall, not really, just to make a comment before you leave. So over to M E C.
Thank you very much, Chair. Can I ask the accounting officer to deal with the matter?
Thanks, M E C and Chair. With regards to
Just put the mic closer to you.
Thanks, Chair. With regards to fruitless and wasteful expenditure, yes, with regards to the first one, which is the one for seventy-eight fox for H VAC, that investigation has been concluded. And then the investigation report has been referred to Labor Relation for Implementation of the Consequences Management and also to the CFO, for the CFO to ensure that he can be able to disclose that in the financial statement and then also be able to show the elements of condonment. With regards to the second one, which is related to security reports, I can also say that the investigation has been completed, has been finalized. And then that investigation report has been referred to Labor Relation for Implementation of Consequences Management. And then also, it has also been referred to the CFO to ensure a proper disclosure in the annual financial statement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any follow-up questions? Okay, if not, Honorable Kanyani, last question that the committee is asking you, M E C.
Yeah, the last question, it's also related to the issues you have raised on investigations. But we just want to know if there were no further just to provide further clarities, if there were no other investigations that were included outside of those related to irregular expenditure. Here we are looking at twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty-one and twenty twenty-one, twenty-two financial year. Just the investigations outside the one for irregular expenditure, if they are. Yes.
M E C?
Let me ask the H O D to help.
Thanks, Chairperson. Members, yes, there are investigation that the accounting officer has instituted. One is on the area of security tender and its advertisement. And the other one is on a lease, in fact, there are two leases. One is eleven Dogonam and also the game building where there was irregular expenditures. And the two reports have been concluded, three reports have been concluded. The other one is around Talot Matlaga, which was not part of the A T last year. But the accounting officer instituted that investigation that led to three reports being concluded by independent firms. And the reports have been finalized. We are in the process of implementing the recommendations of the of the of the report. Thanks very much.
Okay, any follow-up questions? Honorable Kanyani?
I think we'll just note this one and will further probe because we could see that the department is really having a number of challenges. And also citing what happens yesterday, Steve Biggo, something that will also come to you about the burning. But I think we note this will really follow up because we don't have them in our reports. Thanks, Chair.
Treasury, do you want to make any comment? You don't have to if you don't think you want to now. But if you think there's something you want to comment on, it's your chance now. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairperson. I'm Nomule Lombegi, D D G at Provincial Treasury for S C M. My comment is on the policies that H O D indicated that they are in a process of developing them. I wish if they can share the draft policy with G P T for commands.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Fine, yeah. Thank you very much. We, any other matters before I release the M E C? Okay, M E C, thank you very much for one thing I've, yeah, let me say this, one thing I've realized with I'm now talking to you as M E C Mamabulu. Maybe I should say this in the, I'll say it in the next in the next one, yeah, sure, because it will affect the next, it will affect the next one, yeah, sure. Okay, thank you very much, M E C, thank you to your team for the respect you've shown to appear before the committee. We are hopeful that obviously, from what you've given us, we've got some sense that when the A T gives us the report at the end of August, there'll be some improvement. Our intention is to push you, to work with the M E C, to push the H O D to ensure that we reach clean audit. So that's our intention. Because it's only when you've got good financial management accountability that will ensure effective service delivery for our people. Thank you very much. We like Chair for fifteen minutes, one five, so we'll start at twelve o'clock. We will then engage the Department of Roads and Transport. Thank you very much. The meeting is adjourned until twelve o'clock.
Thank you very much, Chair and members.
Thank you, M E C. From D I T to, I mean, from Roads and Transport to join us. If you could ask that we get those that are still outside to join the meeting, including the M C. And the officials from D I T, they can join us if they are outside. From roads, roads and transport, roads and, I must remember that. From Department Housing, Department of Roads and Transport. Are we able to get the M C to join us? Maybe we can take this opportunity to just explain, because we have already explained to the M C some of the things in the earlier session. Maybe we can do it now so that there's clarity. First of all is that we acknowledge the responses that the department has provided to us. These are responses to the to the resolutions of the House last year in November, December. The responses as far as we are concerned were very detailed and it's very, it's appreciated, but obviously there are some gaps which we are intending to follow up on, so that's the purpose. So we want to ask that when you respond, you don't have to go into much detail on the information you've already provided to us, but just respond to the questions asked because there are three things we are concerned, we are going to be focusing on. The first one are the, as I said, the gaps that are there in the report, in the responses. Secondly, in some cases, we've asked you to provide us with your own assessment of what has happened or what are the implications of the plans or the intervention areas you've identified based on the A G's report in twenty twenty one, in twenty 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 one. When you, when you, when the A G found, made those findings, so you put up some plans. You want to know what are the implications of those plans in the financial year that ended this year on the thirty first of March. In other words, we are of the, we understand that you are busy with the process of audit, you are, you are trying to finalize that, you're going to be submitting to Treasury and then to A G. So the A G hasn't audited that, we understand that. But because you've been working on it, would you have an impression of what, what is contained there, what you expect? So we want you to give us a picture as it relates to that. We are not going to hold you, hold it against you if some information you're giving us now, your own assessment changes later. Because when the A G comes and audit, certain things may, may change, so. So, so we are not going to hold you, hold it against you if later there are changes, but we just want to get a sense of what to expect. And then thirdly is that obviously we've now started a new financial year, which was from the first of April this year until next year in thirty first of March. We just get to, want to get from you that the plans you've put up or put in place are going to, do you still need to revise them for they are applicable for the current financial year? Or you are satisfied with them? We would want you to submit those where there are, there are amendments or, or some changes. So that we can use them also to work with you to assess progress that is being made or not made in the financial year that's going to end next year on the thirty first of March. So that's really the focus of our discussion. Like I said, you are one department that has given us, I think the researchers will attest to this, giving us information as thorough as you could. And it's just that obviously in explanation, sometimes there are gaps which might be as a result of the way we've asked the question or maybe when you responded, you thought this was what we're asking for, but we're asking for something different. But we're very happy, we realized that you also sent us a follow up information, I think day before yesterday or two days ago. Thank you very much for that, that is acknowledged. The only problem is that you haven't been able to go through it because of time. So you will be able to, don't, don't, don't be surprised if we ask you things that you submitted two days ago. It's because we haven't been able to go through them accordingly. I thought I should explain that because the M C Mamabulu was there when we explained this, so that when it comes in, we just move straight to our business for the day. We, thank you very much. Let's just then wait for the M C to, to join us. If somebody can check where she is so that you can be able to move. Yeah, one, two, three, exactly, Yasha. Now, thank you, M C, welcome back again. We, what we have done is that we have briefed the team about the approach and the purpose of the session. We thought even if you know, because we did it with you earlier, you'll still understand. But there's one thing I didn't say, because I wanted to say this in your ups, in your presence. We sincerely appreciate the detail in which the department has provided us the information. It's, we appreciate it. But secondly, we are aware that two days ago, we also received further information, which we haven't been able to go through because of time, but we hoping that when we ask the questions we'll be asking, there will be a, so please don't, don't, don't feel bad if you ask something that you already given us two days ago. It's because we haven't been able to go through it. So that's where we at, we've got, so that for the benefit of everyone, you've got also how the provincial treasurer with us, you've got the chairperson of the portfolio committee with us. Yeah, thank you. Let me see, maybe the first thing we could do, just for the team to know, you'll only introduce yourself when you speak. So you don't have to go through introductions now. When you speak for the first time, after that, you don't have to introduce yourself. Let me see, the last time we met, it was in November or December, November last year. One of the big problem you had was filling the position of the H O D. And we realized that, and at the time you said to us, I'm confident that by the time I come to this committee, that thing will be resolved and things would have improved in the department. Now we know that from your report you gave us, you've got the H O D. I don't know if you want to comment or introduce the H O D or comment on that, but yeah, thank you very much.
Good morning, hoping still good morning or good afternoon. Honorable Chair, honorable members. The Chair of the Transport Portfolio Committee. But I can also greet Honorable Kagan as a member of the Portfolio Committee on Transport. And of course, the team from Treasury. We have appointed the H O D. I did say to you last time that when we come back, we'll have an accounting officer. Dr. Tyrone Bartley says in public servant that we, we didn't post, but he was at the premier's office. I can't use the word post. And he was the D D G responsible for corporate service. And without saying anything much here, I must place it on record that the, the H O D started on the first of January and this year, and I can tell you that the impact and the progress we are making on a whole range of areas. You can already see with we are making on a whole range of areas, you can already see with the quality of the report, it's much more amazing, it's quite good, in a short space of time, hardly, almost what, six months, but the impact is quite huge, and it's, it's quite felt, not only by myself and the department, but I think almost everywhere. So with those words, I'm happy to introduce the accounting officer. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I mean, M E C. So now I know that when we're busy with our firecrackers on the first of January, he was in, he was in the office, thank you very much.
I saw it in the office, definitely.
Okay. We, we, we don't, we are not expecting a presentation from you, we'll ask questions and you'll respond to questions. So we'll ask Honorable Kanyani to ask the first question.
Yeah, no, thank you very much, and thanks, M E C, once more, and then also the team that have joined the M E C in the Department of Transport. Yeah, the question is on internal control deficiencies, and as a committee, we've noted the plan that has been submitted. So the questions are follow-up, because already you have responded in details on the issues that you've raised as a committee. One is to provide details for all business units not making use of the records management system thereof, if they are not using this record management system. The second question, you provide the impact of the record management as team formed for phase record management system, just the impact. Now, three, you provide progress in the utilization of the electronic document management system, the E D R M S, which was introduced in twenty seventeen as part of the digitalization project to ensure that all the department records are scanned and filed electronically. Here you provide the progress. My last question, you indicate the plan, if the plan has been revised for implementation in the twenty twenty two, twenty three financial year. So that is the plan, if it has been revised for implementation in the twenty twenty two, twenty three financial year, and if so, the plan has to be submitted to the committee. So those are the four questions, and I think they've been noted. Thanks, M E C, and thanks, Chair.
Thank you over to you, M E C.
Yeah, thank you very much, Honorable Chair, members, once more, let me ask the accounting officer and the team to answer the question raised by Honorable Kanyani.
So you'll introduce, we know they'll introduce you, but if you can just officially introduce yourself and then we continue.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Chair, good afternoon to all the members present, including the M E C. Chairperson, my name is Darren Barclay, as the M E C indicated, I'm the accounting officer of the department. Chairperson, with regards to records management, I, I think I can state that there has been a fair amount of success when it comes to the records management system. However, as a department that has a high number of documents that is utilized on a daily basis, infrastructure-related documents that needs to be accessible at short notice, it is important that we put a system in place on the one end that supports the internal control efficiencies, but then also make sure if we archive or store those, that it is also readily available. I'm sure the, the members would know that the provincial archives is something that the Department of Sport is still working on, it has not really come to fruition, and for me, it will come, we would not have risks insofar as supply chain, roads and so on are concerned. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, any follow-up questions? Honorable Kekane, and then Honorable Randall? Oh, I mean, Honorable Kanyani. I'm sorry, I always, I always do this, M E C, you see, they're all K, and so, I always say Kekane and Kanyani, so I apologize. Honorable Kanyani, then, then Honorable Randall, and I also want to ask some follow-up questions.
No, no, thanks, Chair. Yeah, maybe just to check with the H O D, because I think from your input, maybe it's too early to really give us implications for those business units who are not really utilizing your records management system, because you wanted to get the, the implications thereof, but it's like the way they are, maybe it's still at infancy stage, it's difficult really to say their implications, though you aspire that they should be part of the entire system. And then the second question is about the electronic document management system, which the way you put it, again, not yet outputs around this, you are still working on it. Maybe, I don't know what your estimation in terms of your phases in the review before you go mass scale, when do you think you'd be able to really make an assessment of this electric document management system, whether it's working or not? Because those are the things that you want really to sort clarity. Thanks.
Honorable Randall?
No, Chair, thank you, I was covered by the first question from M E C, thank you.
Okay, I'm also on the first question, maybe for you to be able to assist us, I just want to get a sense, I now know you're saying there's, there's one business unit called roads, how many business units are there? And then, if you can just give, give us a sense, so how many and how many are already on the system, then it will help us understand how many still have to, I know that you're saying that your next target is roads, yeah, just a sense of that, M E C?
Yeah, let me once more ask H O D to look into the matter. H O D?
Okay, thank you, M E C. It's indeed correct, Member Kanyani, that it is too early to make a proper assessment, but the, the risk has been reduced, because you were focusing on the higher-risk items that could have a major impact on your, on your audit, so it is a bit too early. But what I can say is the number of business units that you have is what I would call branches. You have firstly, corporate services, corporate services include your human resources, it includes legal, and it includes some of your I G R functions. You then have the CFO's office, which is finance, and then finance, supply chain, and your internal controls are in the finance unit. You then have what we call the branch roads infrastructure, and then under roads, you have design, you have construction, and the construction part is the biggest portion of those, hence we want to prioritize that. And then under transport, you have the motor vehicle license, the registration, the driver's license, testing centers, and then also your transport operations and regulation. So those are essentially the themes that's in there. But because if you look at it, Chair, your, your corporate services in your finance sections is the biggest sort of producer of documentation, even when it comes to tenders, the biggest portion of your documentation goes into supply chain, because the value chain starts with when you've identified that you have a budget for a project. So when the ad word starts, the bills of quantities, the terms of reference, so that's, and that's in accordance with it, that we have highlighted it. We thought, Chair, by somewhere around the end of August, if not end of August, by the end of the second quarter, which is end of September, we would be in a good, good position to indicate how far we are with the electronic document management system. And also, Chair, it's, when it, when there's a new system, it's also good to do some trial and error. So by the time you, you look at all the biggest branches, you then have a clear sense of what were some of the pitfalls you can address that for seamless implementation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Just before I ask Honorable Randall to ask the next question, I want to take this opportunity to welcome our former chairperson, I know he's here in a different capacity, it's always nice to have him around, because we always, during lunch and what, have good feedback from him. You're welcome, Mr. Khadiri, thank you very much. I know you are coming here with team from Treasury, but it's important to acknowledge you, because we, you normally learn a lot from your feedback, thank you very much. Honorable Randall?
Thank you, Chair, through you, M E C. The committee noted your plan to reduce your occurrence of contingent liabilities, and that the department has provided a report on contingencies for the period to the second quarter of the twenty one, twenty two financial year. Now, M E C, please provide us with an overview assessment of the impact of the plan in the financial year that ended now in March twenty two, and then indicate if the plans have been revised for the current financial year twenty two, twenty three, and if so, the plan must be submitted to the committee, please, thank you.
Thank you. Over to you, M E C.
Can I ask the accounting officer to deal with the matter?
Over to Dr. Barclay. Chair, thank you very much. Chair, you know, for a department like us, it's, it's very difficult to manage your litigation, not because of the inability of the department. It makes me think, a few weeks ago, when we have a meeting with the M E C on a Monday morning, what we call a health check, I was extremely happy that we have reduced the litigation and the litigation amounts and the approach that we followed. But two weeks afterwards, then you're sitting with twenty five more claims, so I'm back to square one. But what we picked up, Chair, is we have made a principle decision that each and every matter that comes forward, we'll defend it on its own merits, and we'll look at the merits and we'll take it on advisement. The only challenge that we, that we have when it comes to the issues of managing litigation is the ability of the state attorney to provide you with appropriate counsel. And, Chair, you know, a labor relations matter and a litigation matter, the manner of defense is completely different. So what we have also do, we have mitigated the challenge with the state attorney by utilizing the Treasury database of attorneys to make sure that we can appoint them, and also the Department of Education, that gives you a variety of legal professionals that you can get directives from. We, we believe that the approach in looking at mediation, provided if we take the mediation route and the settlement route, that it would cost you much less than what a court case would cost you, and that would be the, that would be the principal approach. We, we are using the, the Office of the Premier also as a basis to support us when we need litigation, but, Chair, if you look at our matters, contractual matters, labor relations matters, all of those have come down to about ten percent. The, the major issue, Chair, is all the road claims that you, that you get. Although we, we have a situation where, once we have maintenance contractors, that particular liability in terms of the S L A is transferred to them, but you obviously have those where there is something happening on the road, you have these attorneys that's just waiting for these particular claims, and then they submit. So you sit with a high number of claims where each and every one you have to attend to, and I don't think we will see, we will see a complete result, I would say, before the end of quarter two, because we have started the progressive approach, engaging the state attorney. If the matter is dormant, we ask that the state attorney moves to close the matter, if the matter is dealt with by the state attorney. Otherwise, the matter remains open on our books, the Office of the Premier has the provincial litigation statistics, including the contingent liability, and then in the end, it impacts on the financial statements and obviously the financial health of the department. So, so, Chair, we do update our reports on a monthly basis, there is some changes, but I can just say, with the, with the number of claims that you receive, valid or not, it always poses a risk for the department in how we're managing it. But I can at least say, in the past, the biggest risk for us was the ability to get appropriate counsel, but I can say that risk has been mitigated, because we now even have our infrastructure compliance office. So from a defense perspective, we are on track. So if we can just start to close the matters that is dormant, and I think more than about thirty percent of those are dormant, Chair, then, then we would be in a, in a better space. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Just for your information, and I think, M E C, we did explain this even earlier, the committee is clear in its mind that there are departments which will never eradicate litigations, so, so we're not expecting eradication, but we will expect reduction. Obviously, reduction comes as a result of identifying where the problem is and dealing with it, and I, and I think that's what Dr. Barclay, Barclay's saying, that they are able to identify state attorney or other things and deal with those. Thank you very much for that. Any follow-up questions? Honorable Randall?
Maybe just a comment, comment, M E C, we all know that there's no provision for liability made in the financial statements. So how has this then impacted on how serious you are in reducing liability, or is it, is it, it remains a priority for you irrespective of the fact that there's no provision for liability in your financial statements?
H O D? Over to you, M E C.
Let me ask H O D to, to do the matter.
Yeah, Chair, that's, that's the way in which departments budget, that you, you don't budget for litigation, but of course, if there is a court matter and there's an award from the court, unless you intend to take the award on review, you, you'll have to pay, so, and then you will have to identify funds, but for us, Chair, if there is too many litigation matters, it creates material uncertainty in the department, so litigation for us is an absolute priority, otherwise the financial health is affected.
Can I just comment, Chair?
Yes, go ahead, M E C.
I just want to say to the committee that one of the things that we'll be looking into, once we deal with the matter of the organizational structure, is strengthening the capacity of our legal services to deal with these very complex matters. As matters stand, Chair, and I've conveyed this to the H O D, we, we can proceed with the capacity that we have. There are management issues in that unit. If I were to give you an example, you, you have got cases that with good management shouldn't be there. I mean, a, a good percentage of our litigation portfolio are almost similar cases relating to claims and potholes on the road that have been dormant for sitting there for a long time, and they increase the total number of cases that we have. Real cases that need to, to be processed in the legal process are not many, but a good manager in that department would have approached the court to say, look, make a determination on these cases. Some of them, by the way, are not even for us as a provincial government, many of them belong to municipalities, but with poor leadership, they can't manage that. The second issue that is complicating our expenditure on legal matters is just making a management decision on which cases to defend and which cases to settle, where you can engage with the legal team and see, here you don't have a case, let's settle this matter quick and fast and minus it from the total rule. The other issue is that we settle matters that we should be defending, and then we pay you in sums of money out of unjustifiable settlements. So, so I've said to H O D, we can't continue with the situation we have. As a department, I mean, if you look at our top management leadership in the department, it is at a very high level, and if you look at the entities we have, we have got two boards and we have got chief lead, but our head of legal services is still a director, and that for me is not correct. In other departments, this is a chief director post at most, and I think we need to migrate to that, and also there's a conflation of roles and responsibilities in that branch, which I will neatly deal with. But I want to assure you that this issue, it's a management and leadership issue of the running of the depart, of the legal services, and that's where we are highly vulnerable and exposed. If you look at, just in the short period of time, we have got roads, five roads projects that could be in construction, adjudication done, almost award done, we're taken to court, poor leadership decide not to defend some of the cases, which is also problematic, and accountability, consequence management, those are things that we're looking at. So I just want to say to you that... So I just want to say to you that we shouldn't hide to you that, you know, we, we, I am aware of the management and leadership problems very serious in that area. And I'm just waiting for the organizational structure so that we can have confirmation of post levels so that we don't create additional to the establishments, there are many. So, but it's a, it's a burning area, it's, it's one of the hotspots, Chair. I just wanted to comment, Chair, thanks.
Thank you very much, MEC. Any follow-up questions from members? None. Honorable Kekan?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chair, for the opportunity to ask the follow-up questions. And good morning to the MEC and the team, the Finance Department, Treasury, and all members present here. MEC, the committee has noted the interventions by the department to deal with the underspending, which was identified by the AGSA in the 2020-21 financial year. And the committee has also noted the plans by the department to mitigate possible underspending, which at the end of the third quarter of 2021-22 financial year, that is, the first of March 2021, was at 63%. So I would like the MEC to provide progress on the following aspects, there's quite a number of them, but I'll indicate them one by one. One, it's in the implementation of the draft macrostructure, which has been developed by the Office of the Premier. And then two, the implement, on the progress made on the implementation of the change management strategy, which was developed by the Office of the Premier. That the program, progress on the stakeholders' engagements related to the work on the K46, which was supposed to have been finalized and work resumed before the end of January 2022, as well as the progress in resolving the compliance irregularities on P39 project. And indicate if the contractor has resumed, which was supposed to be in the beginning of February 2022, progress made in the engagements with the stakeholders on the slow progress due to encroachment of the road reserves by the illegal settlement on both K54 and K69, including progress made by the project team on amending the project methodology to ensure that the works on the unoccupied areas proceed unhindered. And lastly, provide the committee with the progress in launching a project management tool that will assist in the management and reporting on the project deliverables. And I've got another question, but I'll ask it after they've responded, Chair.
Thank you very much. Over to you, MEC.
Chair, on the matters of the organizational structure, I must say that, and as they flow from the Premier's office, so the DDG was responsible even for these matters when he was there, I mean, the HOD, so I guess I should give him the opportunity to, this is his area of, one of his areas of passion and expertise. I think I should leave those matters to him. HOD?
Thank you. Thank you, MEC. Members, in so far as the macrostructure is concerned, at the time when the report was presented, it means the macrostructure was then finalized. And the macrostructure means MEC, MEC's team that's guided by the Ministerial Endbook, the HOD's office guided by the Public Service Act and the draft proposal on organizational review by the DPSA, and then the branches or units, Roads Infrastructure, Transport, Corporate Services and Finance. In the past, you also had G Fleet as a branch, but the function of G Fleet has evolved over time. So the macrostructure has been finalized, the functional structure of all the structures below the macrostructure has been finalized. All the positions has been identified, the positions has now been costed. Last night's meeting on the organizational structure, we are now, we have brought the organizational structure in terms of priority posts in line with the available funding that we have, based on the indicative allocations by Treasury. And we are, I am now ready to sign a letter to ask the HOD of Treasury to confirm the budget. Because there's two important documents that must accompany our submission to the DPSA. Is a letter from our CFO confirming that the budget is available, and a letter from the provincial treasury. Those two documents with a business case, the organizational structure, and the organizational structure need to be captured on what they call OPLAS. That has been finalized. So we are only packaging the documentation now for MEC's signature to the Premier. So functional structure, macrostructure, everything has been finalized. I can also report, Chair, that the principle decision regarding G Fleet has been made that G Fleet should not be a branch in the Department of Roads and Transport. They should function separately as a government component, where there is no impact on the Fiskus because that's something that Treasury would be looking for. And they are self-sufficient as a, as a branch where they are now. So the business case has been finalized. Our discussion last night, there's three matters that need to be finalized in the business case. The financial arrangements, the governance arrangements, and the issue of reporting. The first point of call for G Fleet is, I need to sign a letter to the HOD of Treasury to confirm that this is the draft business case, please confirm it. I'm planning to sign that letter before end of next week, Friday, so that the G Fleet structure can come to fruition. The G Fleet business case will be attached to the Department of Roads and Transport report to the DPSA so that they can see the reason why we have taken them out is because they are now moving to become an entity. And, and that's where we are. Chair, in so far as the change management strategy is concerned, since I've been appointed, I have visited regions where I visited staff and I've also explained to them what the whole issue of the organizational structure is all about. We have also conducted an internal survey. And from that survey and the staff meeting that we had, we had a staff meeting on the 12th of May, both hybrid and physical attendance. And the primary discussion was for the MEC to introduce smart mobility as a strategy for the department over the foreseeable term and the organizational structure. And from that assessment, 76% of staff indicates that they are aware of the organizational structure and where we are going. Consultations has been completed and all the other work has been completed. Chair, just, just at a high level, MEC will touch on the issues relating to projects. I can say, at this stage, I'm, I'm satisfied with the stakeholder engagements that have taken place on K46. The only challenge that we, that we see there is, if you receive, see a new truck coming onto the site the following day, the community are asking us, is there new contractor? Because now we are also entitled to 30%. That's the risk. So it's, it's a continuous exercise to go to the site, engage with the communities, have our social facilitators and all that. The issue of the encroachment on our roads, the issues of compliance issues. Chair, I, I said to the MEC, and the MEC was, was very clear. There is no way that we can follow a tender process for a road. You even have the property audit before you award a tender. That property audit is very clear when it comes to compliance with legislation, the evaluation process and compliance with supply chain management regulations. So you have followed everything. In the end, you get an interdict. Why would you as a department not defend or oppose that? So I have said to the MEC and the MEC and I is in agreement, every approach that we get with an interdict on our roads, we need to defend because we have followed all processes. There's property audits to that. If you don't defend the matter, it means you're going to have a matter delayed for about 18 months. Because if you don't defend the matter, you must then submit a review application. If you are late, you must first submit a condemnation application. So as a matter of principle with the, with the compliance office, we will defend all matters unless the property audit has revealed that there is significant non-compliance. So for us to ensure that projects are continuing, we have made that principle.